Appreciate all of you that are here this morning. The weather's a little bit distroyable, it's probably not going to be much better from now April first, so we can get back to here. If you will, please, write for our indication. But I just wish to do that part, and then Mr. Cocke and all of you, and I pray, Mr. Wood.
Great. Rich to him, the Father Lord, we take this opportunity to pause before this meeting and acknowledge you and thank you for all of your many blessings, Lord. We thank you for this great country that we live in, thank you for the freedoms that are ours to enjoy. Lord, we thank you for each one of the servicemen and women that are serving this country, home and abroad, Lord, we pray your protection is on them. We thank you for all that have served in the past and for the freedoms that they have ensured us by their service. Heaven Father, we ask you now to bless us during this meeting, give us of your divine wisdom as we make the decisions that are brought before us in Jesus' name, with grace.
Mr. Wood, Mr. Cocke.
Please place flag. A kitchen, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good safety, please. Next time on our agenda, before our minutes, I believe, gentlemen, so this morning, if you'd recommend, anything, any changes made, whether you make mention of that or not, I solicitor most of the adopted, if you receive.
My most dear adopted.
Your second?
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Men's favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you. At this particular time, we have with us two retired educators, and this is a proclamation that recognizes our retired teachers. And Ms. Luther, if you would, I think you're the president of the organization, if you would, please give us a brief rundown, and we're just so happy and thankful that you're here today. We do this every year, but it's always a pleasure, so we'll give you the microphone at this time.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having us. I brought Anita Gibson, she's the vice president, among men, many, many things. She's extremely active in both local, state, and national positions, and I appreciate her being here with us. Thank you so much for recognizing retired educators, as we realize all of us would not be where we are without educators, and it's nice to be acknowledged, and I would like to say I appreciate the ones that are still in the trenches, they've got a hard road. And we also have a facsimile check here that's given by the Education Retirees Association that represents the number of hours, volunteer hours, that our retirees have given service to their various communities. And this is only the number of people who come to our meetings and actually report what they've done, so it's probably four or five times at least more than this, but it's a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents just for a year, and that's pretty significant to them, what they give of their time.
Ms. Luther, we appreciate all of our retired teachers. I know today, one of my fourth grade teachers, being buried today, right, when they said it went orange, she was in the middle of the pool. And I could go into a lot of detail about what I remember about her, and some of you may remember, but we have a tendency to thank the little retired, a lot of you teachers just sat down, but what you have told us is very complimentary of the work that you continue doing, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate it. We're absent Mr. Black this morning, Mr. Cocke and all, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on back there?
Well, thank you very much. I have a lot of fond memories of educators in elementary school all the way through college, and very few memories that once upon, but all good people, and they all had an issue in life, and you folks do as well. Thank you for continuing to work after your retirement, so we appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Sharp?
Well, educators and education is a public service, and that's part of who you are, and so you can carry the service throughout your life, and so it's commendable, and this all of us, and you ladies in particular, have done a great job, and I know I've got so many teachers that I had, administrators, that helped me to attain any kind of success that I've had, I know I owe it to them, and so thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Pleasure, Mr. Wood.
Teachers, there are a lot of jobs out there that offer instant gratification, and I think the education system is not always one of those, you don't always get to see the fruits of your labor right away, but somewhere down the line, you can see the development of the students that you had in the classroom. And I teach in Irish earth, and so I see the same, some similarities there, and I appreciate the patience now that the teachers had when I was a student, and I appreciate what you all do. And Ms. Luther was, she was at Five High School for a number of years, and some of those years were while I was a student there, and I don't know if she remembers me there, if there's any good or bad or ugly that you got with that. I was not an excellent pure student, I don't care to tell you now.
I do remember you being.
I appreciate you.
You are, okay.
And I appreciate what you all do.
You want to let her explain?
That's why I...
We'll move on, Mr. Wood.
Oh, I had to give some of those pages, that's a question. I really enjoyed having you all here today and hear about your organization and what all you do, the great things that you do. Teachers, to use one of Mr. Harfield's phrases, I shudder to think what I would be without the teachers that were in my life. They helped shape my life, and today it seems like the role of teachers in shaping young people's life is even more important than it was back when I was a young kid, but I really do appreciate that, you know, my teachers shaped me in many ways, sometimes with a stern attitude, and I, one thing for sure, I would probably have had outbreaks if it hadn't been for Ms. Tal in the second grade, because she saw me play with one of my front things, and she said, "Come here, boy, get up here." She twisted that thing right out, so you just never know what a teacher is going to be, I call up and do, and I appreciate what you all do. Thank you.
We try to support things in the county, too. Our community service project this year is the DeKalb County Children's Advocacy Center that we support, and we made a strong donation to Toys for Tots, so we try to support. I want to say.
I'd just like to thank the commission for recognizing us, and to just say that, you know, once a teacher, always a teacher, once an educator, always an educator. When we talk about retired educators, we talk about not just those in the classroom, but those administrators and those support professionals that we work with on a daily basis. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you recognize and understand that, once we retired, we didn't stop and sit down, we're still continuing to work in our communities, we work for the children area communities, and we support those who are still in the school settings, working in the Fort Payne and the DeKalb County School System. So, to be recognized here by this group is very appreciative.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, we appreciate it very much. Let me give you a little experience, I wanted to be a school teacher, went to Jackson to be a school teacher. And I was substitute one day, playing for you, and there was a little fella in there, and I couldn't do anything with him, nobody else could either, that night. And I'd give his name and address, you know, still living. And I met some other grocery store, and I was trying to get away from her, because I knew she was going to shoot me out right there in the middle of Carol Bell's grocery store. Finally mattered, she said, "Mom, Mr. Harfield sure does love me." I was shocked, to be true. She said, "How you doing, son?" I said, "'Cause he said he wished I was his just one day." Don't play that in the street. I'm going to leave this proclamation as y'all remain, until we get through, so we'll have a picture, if you don't mind, all right? Whereas, public education is the foundation of our society and the most critical element in the progress and enlightenment of our state and nation, whereas, public educators and our education system have carried the torch of knowledge, opening doors to the challenging excitement of learning for counties, counties' youth, and whereas, public educators, because of their deep and divided love of children, have displayed a commitment to the students and dedication to their profession, and whereas, our states, retired public educators have served long careers, laboring throughout their careers to educate our state's school children, and whereas, retired public educators throughout Alabama are deserving of high praise and recognition, our state can bestow for devotion to their profession. It therefore is resolved that the county commission at DeKalb County this year, by the plan November nineteenth, that's not today, but nineteenth, has retired teachers' day in the county, and encourages all citizens to join together and pay tribute to its retired public educators. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Next out, did, there's another part, I'm going to make something, it's Brawls.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just have a real brief update for you. We think all the crews, except one, have played their last round of the push hogs, have already brought them into the yard. They should be finishing up, hopefully this week, if it allows them to run. We have split the trucks up and have them hauling into different districts, spots and churn around on our roads, trying to get some places fixed on those that might cause some problems through winter time, we'll be continuing with that, probably for the next at least two or three weeks. Crew leaders went around and identified several spots, so hopefully we can get these fixed up, maybe sometime by the end of the month, or in the ways of December. Our patch truck, as you remember, had one involved in an accident, we had to send it to Birmingham with a body shop, they've notified me if that truck is fixed, and I'm going to have to go down and inspect it, make sure everything meets with my approval on it, and we're doing a little, working out some details on getting them paid for it, but I'm hoping to be able to pick it up this week. I'm not sure if they'll release it before it's actually paid or not, that's something we're working the details out on, but as soon as we can, I'll get it back and get it put back to work. That's about all I have, we have enough, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Brawls, your question.
I do have a comment for the media, for those people who live in the south end of District Three, and County Road Six area, we did some patching down there to try to save the road, that we could do something better, we used asphalt, and I think there's a misunderstanding about what was going on, I had a gentleman call me, said it was the worst piece of painting that he had ever seen, and after I explained that it wasn't intended to be paved just to patch the road, he was okay, but there might be some other folks down there that think we were paving it too, so I just wanted to know that.
All right, Mr. Cocke, yeah, it'll come, go ahead with personnel.
We have several personnel things, as you know, we've actually got five positions posted right now. One of them was to replace a guy that had retired in District Two. You want me to do these all together?
Go ahead.
Okay. And I have a situation here, we talked about these last four positions we posted, we never really determined for sure, but I kind of took it, that these positions were to be placed in the four district crews, one in each, and we've got a little problem, all these guys, and I'm going to recommend to hire, live either Sylvania or north of Sylvania, and they're very hesitant to take a job where they've got to drive to Collinsville for the, it's just a pretty good drive for anyhow, it's probably going to be a forty mile trip for, with the pay not being a lot, we're starting them at twelve dollars an hour, but I have another employee, Irwood Thomas, has retired, so I need to post another position, that'll be another opening, but what I would like to do is go ahead and recommend five people to fill five of these vacancies, and then try to find somebody that lives kind of closer to the Collinsville area and fill it with this last position we're going to ask you to post today.
Is that agreeable? All right, go ahead, Mr. Brawls.
I'd like to recommend Richard Dobereil, he'll be actually the guy that's replacing the vacancy in District Two. William Baker, Joseph Garrett, Terry Haynes, and Raymond Downer, that'd be the five I'd like to recommend to place, and then I'd like to ask you to post another opening, replace Irwood Thomas.
All right, do you want me to hear the recommendation, any questions? I'll hear the motion, but we honor the question.
So, what?
Your second?
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. Let's record some statements, Westbrook and Stein. Any more discussion? Any favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you.
And one other thing, we talked about buying some new bush cutters, would y'all like to go ahead and authorize Ben to send out bids on a machine like we were talking about? If we do, we'll need to act on that today before we can actually send bids out on them.
I think it'd be appropriate to proceed with that, if it's agreeable, you gentlemen?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions concerning that? I'm just going to have it recorded in a minute, if we're agreed with that action, you proceed with that, so.
Thank you, that's all I have for you.
All right. Next out, engineering, Mr. Luther, kind of one fifteen, one eighty-eight, track strip and wallwork.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cocke and all had asked me to see if I could get some striping done on those three roads. We sent proposals out, we received two back, one from Ozark Striping, one from J C Chief Contractors. J C Chief was the low bid, or low proposal, that's five thousand, five hundred dollars, would be my recommendation, to be awarded this proposal to J C Chief.
Mr. Luther, you're very welcome.
Yes, sir. We, following Mr. Luther's question, thank you.
Thank you. Your second?
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. Any favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you. We'll end with you, the train of conversation.
As you're all aware, back in August, we were required by the new law to adopt the county transportation plan for the new rebuild Alabama funds that we would be receiving. We did that, and at the time, we did not know exactly how we were going to utilize the federal exchange money. This is the federal money that we typically get from the state each year, they're changing the way they're doing that, seeing it to us correctly. At that time, we didn't really know how we were going to do this, and we didn't have that in the plan. We had worked that out, we spent that money in District Three, which opened up some of the rebuild money, or some additional roads for Mr. Cocke and all, which we added, and then also, you can see, each of you have the proposed amended plan there, and the last three roads were three additional roads that Mr. Cocke and all had, that he wanted to go ahead and do solely with his existing three R funds. We're not required to show that on the plan, but for continuity, I put everything on this plan, so we have one list, one plan, everybody knows what it is, no questions, it's all there. We will not have to account for those projects, those three, as part of the new law and program, but just so that everything is in one place, we added that there. And of course, we don't, we don't know how this money is really going to go, all based on projections, so hopefully, January, February, we'll begin to get some of this money coming in, and also should get the federal exchange money, which they will send it all to us correctly, and we'll just have to keep up with it as we make payments, as this goes through. We have plans, if we adopt this amendment today, this plan, I plan to be getting this out pretty soon, to open bids in January. With this new law, we've set up more of a, it's going to function basically just like the DOT is their project, is we have set advertising dates and set letting dates throughout the state, so that every county is bidding it exactly the same, and put together these model plans. We can do them at any time, any of the months, but that way, contractors know upfront, beforehand, what counties are bidding what, so it's, I think it's the third, Wednesday of each month, second, third Wednesday, the second Wednesday each month, and ten is the set bid date for these types of projects on these plans. So, every month, there will be a set of proposals to be done locally, we have to advertise everything on the A C C A, A C A website, but that way, you know, we're not bidding it one day, and other counties bidding it some other day, each month is a set date, so it's going to look a little bit more like DOT does. If anybody has any questions about this plan, before we take any action, I think we'll have to answer them.
Any question? If not, your motion, if you're able to adopt that amendment, please. Your second?
Right.
Motion second, in discussion. Any favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you. Go ahead, come.
And lastly, the National Association of County Engineers Conference, Alabama is hosting that conference this next April. A C A is working on this program, and that will also correspond with our A C E A annual meeting that we have typically in May. Since we're hosting, we're going to be involved, this will also serve as our annual meeting as well, so I would just like to request permission from myself and my assistant, Irving Wallace, to attend this conference.
Appreciate you, being in our state, married and born, we have had to give, and your motion, we honor it, please. Don't leave, your second?
Thank you.
Motion second, in discussion. Men's favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you.
Thank you.
He elect right, Mr. Hope.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm going to stand before you, bring you some good news, usually when I'm standing before you, it's something bad. So, back in May, Mr. Clifford and I began working on some grant packages for Homeland Security Grant money that is becoming available, and private day, to stand before you, to tell you that we have been secure eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars of Homeland Security Grant money for three separate projects that will bring additional resources to the county, that will aid in response to recovery, to emergency life saving incidents and disasters. The first project was a utility vehicle, U T V vehicle, for the DeKalb County Car Association. It will be a county-wide resource, but it will be housed with the DeKalb County Car Association, it'll be available to them, to all the car departments and any other organizations in the county, be used during planned and untended events. We were able to secure twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars for the purchase of that vehicle. The second project was a automatic external decurvelator project, it's a project I've been working on since taking over the safety coordinator position. This project, working with the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Wilton and Matt Martin, we were able to secure thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of automatic external decurvelators to be placed in sheriff vehicles and some of the pre-identified buildings that are either used for Homeland, DeKalb County, and Michigan. The third project is a E O C upgrade, technology upgrade, we were able to secure twenty-nine thousand, seventy-two dollars to upgrade all the workstations down in the E O C, so these workstations are in full in ensuring that the agencies and partners that are using the E O C during an event, so a disaster, or a fire, or even a law enforcement event, these workstations ensure that they are able to maintain a common operating picture, be able to maintain situation awareness, so everyone knows what is going on, they're aware, remain up to date. So, in total, we were, again, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, and, you know, I want to, I want to thank each of you, the ladies, the commission, they helped tremendously in this, providing the information I need to be putting these grant packages. Again, Sheriff Wilton and Matt Martin, I appreciate everything that they've done, I would also extend our appreciation to Nathan Nail, who is the president of the Fire Association, and also Mr. Clifford, for his help in building these grants and getting them secured. What I also would like to do is, if you're pleased, would you like to go ahead and begin to approve that we begin the bidding process, because hopefully this project will be open bidding, that's all I'm doing, and if you're okay with going ahead and approving that, there will be, there will be a small time delay, there is some still administrative paperwork we have to sign off on, we're waiting for that to be sent in from Montgomery, as soon as that's available, we will begin, we will be able to proceed with the many of those bids, and I hope that those may be handled personally.
Thank you, Mr. Hope, for your quick head on work, you all have done, everyone's so skilled, you've done a wonderful job, you serve a quick change. Gentlemen, I would recommend that we, our employees, work through this process and continue as soon as possible, to get this campaign to live in life correctly. Your motion, that thing? Your second?
Thank you.
Motion second, in discussion. Any favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right. They have the telephone, Mr. Sharp.
We have the, I saw the lease plate with the sheriff's office and DNA, that it's between that thing, we want to, we'd still get on, we have two, two deals, pulled out one, J M Wood, that started about five hours, and then C, thirty-two, six. So, I'd rather not be able to, let's see, thirty-six.
Thank you. Any questions concerning the bid? If not, your motion, if we agree, we can bid to win the city. Your second?
Second.
Motion second, in discussion. Any favor, let me know what you're saying, aye? Anyone opposed, say your objection. Thank you. You may be, Mr. Sharp.
Also, along with that, there's been things that have, maybe you've tried to have to pull various, tried to various things, and so, definitely, you have to give it to us, certainly, for some of that used, after, if you do that, you might, you wouldn't say that, but, you know, you have one, one certainly, that's also twenty-two thousand, eight, after you, if you do that, so we're going to, twenty-five thousand. There's the only good.
Yeah, that, the board, Mr. Sharp, you're right.
I'd like to comment, we did our few diligence on checking out the vehicle, the way it'd be used, conveyed, and so forth, it will be assigned to you, and you can actually get on all the agency vehicles, be able to be used to pull hospital care, or, or there's necessary. It's a large enough capacity vehicle, for virtually anything that might need to pull within reasonable distance. But the fact is, it will be an extended use vehicle, it's not something that's only a rotating basis, to be kept primarily at the road department for security purposes, but in the long run, price was right, vehicles are about what we need, that will hold us for a long time, it's good that we can, we recommend that we approve the purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Cocke and all. Your second?
Second.
Motion second, let me just say this, we're deep in bid, Mr. Cocke and Mr. Chris Burke and the others, going into great detail on the changes this day, we, as far as we concerned, we've located, we found, caused their expertise in these particular matters, we've saved us a tremendous amount of money, and we're so appreciative, Mr. Cocke and all, Burke, and the others, that, and that, we thank you so much for that, credit for credit, you allowed me to do my best, so I can call you directly, so that you know. We have motion second, any more discussion? Men's favor, let me know what you're saying, aye?
Aye.
If anyone votes, thank you. Thank you. Sheriff's Office, personally, Sheriff Wilton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to say thanks to Mr. Posey, Mr. Clifford, and Mayor, very outstanding department to work with, and we have a great relationship. And I think that's why I stand in this county, is for everyone to come together. And I appreciate you men greatly for coming together with us to work through these issues like this. So that being said, my, my face is not dirty, that is hair that's on my face. We, uh, we elected to have a fundraiser in November, in O'Shea in November, what the staff came up with. I'm not sure the ladies part of it, they worked that out, but, uh, the men and, uh, actually raising money for Relay for Life, cancer survivors. And we're going to spill over into December more than likely, we're going to have like a super circle of seniors all operating money off of this. So I do proud of being professional, but also working together like we do with, uh, Mr. Posey, Mr. Clifford, and you. Sometimes you got to extend that olive branch out and make sure everybody, you know, have satisfied the same thing as what they came up with. But, uh, and I'm very supportive of it because we're very professional matter. But we don't have much today, uh, Chief Smith, I'd be here, so I'm kind of taking in for what he has. And, and we have, uh, one, one hire we would like to make, uh, in replace Jennifer Whaley. We would like to hire Brandon Vaughn as a correction officer.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, any questions concerning hiring? If not, if you're motioned to honor your question.
No move.
Your second.
Thank you.
Motion second discussion. Any favor, if you don't say aye.
Aye.
If anyone votes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Chief.
Uh, opioid lawsuit, uh, we are turning this item over to, uh, the same councilman, Mr. Moon, Mr. Moon, please.
This is a class action suit that, uh, most states, I haven't checked lately, how many, but Alabama has joined this class action suit to, but you have to do it county by county. And, uh, it's a class action suit against the manufacturer, producers of opioids. And even some pharmacists, uh, pharmacies are now, have been sued. I, I know of only one that is still in it, most of them have made their way out. But it's the lawsuit that I recommend our county to get involved in, not for any funds that will come, but to show support for stopping so much opioids being distributed to people by doctors. And there will be limitations that will take place. I have researched this lawsuit, and I just think it's great, and I recommend that, I mean, uh, join it. And does anyone have questions?
We talked about it sometime.
We have.
It's, uh, it's been, it's very important, uh, because opioid crisis, uh, but we appreciate, uh, Mr. Moon, the research on it. And he's developed quite a knowledge about that and have the, uh, expertise in so many areas. But if there've been questions that you all have about this class action suit, uh, we would go apart, I'll, we, we'd see, we'd, uh, address him with those questions this time. If not, then I give your motion that we, uh, that you give me, Mr. Moon, the authority to sign on to this lawsuit in a proper way.
Something.
Your second.
Thank you.
Motion second discussion. Any favor, if you don't say aye.
Aye.
If anyone votes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next item is councilman, Mr. Campbell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first thing we have is a resolution, um, of the governing body that Ricky Harkrow is authorized to enter into an agreement on behalf of the DeKalb County Commission with third party contracting agencies for the purpose of providing general public transportation needs.
This is something that we have to do, uh?
Every year.
Every year.
It's not a daily, uh, but we have to have a record of, so is there any question about it, is that an indication?
If not, if you're motioned, we don't have a question.
No move.
Your second. Motion second discussion. Any favor, if you don't say aye.
Aye.
If anyone votes, thank you. Thank you. We have the travel.
I like to just come once a year and ask for travel approval, is that okay? Uh, like approval to travel outside of the county for all council agents, agent and transportation training this year, and for all transportation for the contracted agencies under rural public transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, that's clear on its contract and, uh, we have, Mr. Campbell, we, we have to, uh, they all, both that. Any question about it? If not, if you're motioned on or request.
Okay.
Your second.
Thank you.
Motion second discussion. Any favor, if you don't say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
If anyone votes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Last thing, real quick. Uh, we're doing our Christmas for Sanders program again. If anybody wants to donate to us, we're going to use that money to buy things that some of our meal clients need. So the people who are getting homebound meals or eating at the Sanders Center. Last year, some people asked for blankets, some people asked for cleaning supplies, some people asked for a shirt, some people asked for more food over Christmas. So that's what we're doing. So call us if anybody wants to donate.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Next item is Ms. Hancock with the library book signing, Ms. Hancock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time. I would like to say I appreciate everything that our veterans do. And in conjunction with that, um, it took me three months to get this veteran to come and do our book signing. His name is Captain Roger Hill. He now lives in Georgia and he works at Georgia Tech. He has a bestselling book called Dog Company, and when he was in Iraq, that is the name of his, that was the name of his company. Um, this book is, um, endorsed by, um, Glenn Beck, Anderson Cooper, and the Washington Post. He has also been on Sean Hannity, and Sean Hannity did the foreword for this book. We're very excited to have him at the library, and he will do a presentation at one-thirty, and that is this Saturday. And then he will sign every book and talk with everybody that is later. Um, tape the ballgames, uh, you can be there at halftime in Alabama, they play Mississippi State at eleven, and then the real game, Auburn and Georgia doesn't start until tomorrow. So be sure to tape your games so you can come out and say Captain Hill. We want to welcome him to Fort Payne and show him a really good showing of our community.
That is this time Saturday, one-thirty.
It is one-thirty.
Thank you.
So y'all please come.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Uh, but what I believe you have a recognition of all what two veterans, like, you would play this dress thing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harkrow. Uh, last week, uh, it was made, I was made aware of, uh, Mr. Frank O'Slader, uh, from Fife, Alabama. He is, um, a true American war hero. Mr. Charles Bass, um, let me know about him. Mr. Bass is here today, I'm glad he was able to be here. I was afraid he wasn't going to be able to make it, he has some other obligations. But, uh, uh, once I got to check him in and, and some of the research that he had done and, and provided me and, and reading about Mr. Slater, I was unaware of what, of Mr. Slater and, and what he had done, but I wanted to make it, uh, uh, take this opportunity to, uh, to give him the recognition that he deserves. Uh, and, uh, there's so many unsung heroes throughout this country, but we are very proud of the ones here in DeKalb County. Uh, Mr. Slater, uh, died seventy-seven years ago today, uh, defending this country in World War Two. Uh, he was a gunner on the USS San Francisco. Uh, he stayed at his post while others fled, uh, and, and was able to shoot down a Japanese torpedo plane, and it crashed into his, uh, gunner station, and, and he lost his life. Uh, but, um, when so many, so many, during Veterans Day, we, we, we think about these folks, but, uh, it's important for us to remember, uh, these American heroes. I want to read just a little bit about him right quick, and, and so you know, and, and, and got a website here that, uh, if anybody wants to check it out a little bit more, there's a lot to read about Mr. Slater. He was a, a fine, uh, American citizen, and, uh, and a lot to read about his family and, and, and kind of the situation that happened after his death. But, uh, if you will allow me, I'll, I'll read this about Mr. Frank Slater. Mr. Frank Ogle Slater, born December nineteenth, nineteen-twenty, died November twelfth, nineteen-forty-two, was a Seaman Second Class of the United States Navy. He was killed in action aboard the USS San Francisco off Salvo Island, uh, during World War Two, and subsequently, he was awarded the Navy Cross. Uh, Slater was one of twelve children, uh, of James Lafayette Slater, a sharecropper, uh, and, uh, Lenore Slater. Uh, he was born in Kenneber Cove in Marshall County, but grew up in Fife, Alabama. He enlisted in the US Navy Reserve in February of nineteen-forty-two, and upon completion of his basic training, he was assigned to the heavy cruiser, the USS San Francisco in April of nineteen-forty-two. Uh, on November twelfth, as, as we've mentioned, nineteen-forty-two, he was killed in action at his battle station. Slater was posthumously awarded the Navy Cross, uh, and this is the reading of his citation, uh, for that Navy Cross. The President of the United States of America takes pride in presenting the Navy Cross to Seaman Second Class Frank Ogle Slater, US Navy Reserve, for extraordinary heroism and devotion to duty and action against the enemy while serving as a gunner aboard the heavy cruiser USS San Francisco. During an engagement with the Japanese naval forces near Salvo Island in the Solomons on the night of November the twelfth, courageously refusing to abandon his gun in the face of an own rush of Japanese tornado, torpedo planes, Seaman Second Class Slater, with cool determination and utter disregard for his own personal se- safety, kept blazing away until the hospital crowd plunged out of the sky in flames and crashed onto his station. His grim perseverance and relentless, relentless devotion to duty in the face of certain death were in keeping with the highest traditions of the United States Naval Service. His gallant, he gallantly gave up his life in defense for this country. Uh, Slater was, uh, later awarded, uh, the Purple Heart, uh, for his service. He was buried at sea, and, uh, he has a marker, uh, in art in National Cemetery. Sl- Slater's, uh, heroism was, was noted, and, uh, a destroyer, destroyer escort ship was actually named after him. The USS Slater was named in his honor. The ship was launched in February of nineteen-forty-four, and it was fostered by his mother, uh, Miss James L. Slater. Uh, the USS destroyer, uh, USS Slater, excuse me, now is actually, uh, a museum ship in, at the Hudson River in Albany, New York. Uh, so it's a, it's a high honor to have, to be able to recognize, uh, Mr. Slater. We want to never forget these heroes. Uh, you can read more about him at this, uh, uh, just a great story about his mother and his family and the trip that they made to Tampa, Florida for the christening of the, of the USS Slater. Uh, they were just sharecroppers, very poor at the time, and, uh, uh, didn't have the money to travel. There were three newspapers in DeKalb County at that time, and, uh, those newspapers run articles and, and collected donations so that that family could go down for the, for the launch of, of the USS Slater. Uh, it's, uh, you can find out more about it at, uh, USSslater.org, actually. There's several articles to read from the three newspapers here, from newspapers in Tampa, Florida. And, uh, we, we just, uh, at this time, uh, after Veterans Day, we thought it would be, I thought it would be a good time to, to mention this. And thank you so much, Mr. Bass, for bringing this to our attention. Mr. Harkrow.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, and thank you, Mr. Bass, for bringing this, uh, attention. I think one time several years ago, we made mention of this, but we need to be reminded of this. And it reminded me of these people who are so brave, who will not even stand at when the pledge of allegiance is given on Starfleet, Alabama, the flag. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, this, you put this anywhere you want to. Uh, it is a shame that, uh, such disrespect is shown, uh, not only for that, but for men like this gentleman who has, uh, given all for what we have today, even for their privilege not to stand. So we, thank you, Mr. Wood, for bringing that to our attention, thank you, Mr. Bass, for bringing, uh, uh, that to our attention again. One other thing I have before, uh, we adjourn our meeting, uh, I have the sad duty today of telling you that my friend, uh, over fifty years, Mr. Charles Mooney is retired at the end of, uh, December of this year. Uh, I've known Mr. Mooney longer than anybody here. Uh, when I was in high school, he moved to our community, and that's been a long time ago. And, uh, he worked hard, he became assistant DA, and then he, of course, had a successful practice. But, uh, I've known him personally for all of these years, and, uh, Charlie, it's been a pleasure to have you work with us. It's been a pleasure for, uh, us to, uh, be, uh, surrounded with your honesty and integrity in what you've done for us, and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Uh, we, we, uh, are going to miss you, and, uh, I, I want to thank you for all that you've done for us. Now I'll give you, uh, gentlemen, a lead to say, uh, anything that you would desire to say at this time, Mr. Campbell.
It's been an honor. I didn't have a chance to know you before I became a commissioner, and, uh, your integrity is outstanding. But you're not retiring, you've just taken an easier job.
I will miss you, Miss she personally, and I appreciate the services that you've been to each one of us as individuals and to the county for so many years.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Charles.
I appreciate it. Mr. Mooney, I appreciate your professionalism, integrity, uh, is outstanding, and, uh, appreciate the time that we've worked together. And a lot of the times, you work very closely with the county attorney. I'm not sure, how, how long have you been with, with us now?
I think I came on in oh-nine, I think, I think it was, I think it was January of oh-nine. No, no, it wouldn't, it would have been January, it'd have been December, I think, to go to work in January of, uh, ten.
And you, of course, you did have a storied career as an attorney, very, very successful. And I've worked with every county attorney, and I bet you need that.
Bless your heart.
That's all right.
Somebody, I hope you're getting that recorded. Oh, my.
I got to know Mr. Uh, Mr. Mooney when I come on as county commissioner, and, uh, and I can echo the sentiments and, and accolades of the integrity and the professionalism, but more than anything, uh, what I'll, what I'll take away from my relationship with Mr. Mooney is the kindness and the support that he has shown me, uh, personally, and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure and honor to be at work with you.
Mr. Mooney, I, I, I hate to see you go, it's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, just the encouragement that you've always given me has been, uh, so special. Always a word of kindness, always a word of support, always encouraging me to move forward, and, uh, and, and, and I, I really do appreciate that. Uh, I've, I've enjoyed working with you, I've always found, uh, and I know it comes from your many years practicing, that you've always had good, solid wisdom when, when we would have conversations or questions. Uh, but the most important thing that I saw, uh, that you always kept, being involved in, in, uh, in your practice, was your Christian values.
Thank you.
You are a devout Christian man, and, and I sure do appreciate your work with us.
I'm so humbled.
Uh, for many years, like I said, I've known one anybody here when I was a boy. He moved to our community, and, uh, and I've known him in the last several years during some health issues that were listed in my family, me personally. There's not, uh, a day or so past, he called and checked on me and my folks, and, uh, Charlie, I, I thank you so much for that. We'll give you anything you want to say this night.
Before he does.
Yes, sir.
The company unawares, so I wasn't able to, well, express myself.
I asked you if he wanted me to tell him, he told me just now.
Well, yeah.
It's hard, it's too hard to do.
Mr. Mooney has been a great coworker, and we've worked on a lot of projects together. So while I won't see you on a working basis, you will always be my friend.
That's, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm so humbled by what else has been said, I'll get emotional here, and, and, uh, I, I appreciate our commissioner who said that my life, one of the things most important to him was my Christian values. And I was saved when I was ten years, seven months, and three days old. I was baptized when I was ten years, seven months, and ten days old. Now I got the baptismal record, and I, I can only remember- Now I got the baptismal record, and I, I can only remember I did it in the fall of the year. But, uh, thank you, all of you, for everything that you've said, and I appreciate so many of you come here often, but you never questioned my integrity or my advice that you would learn about and so forth. So may God bless you all richly, and you too, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, our next meeting will be November the twenty-sixth, that'll be two weeks from today, here in the chambers. We will have one meeting in December, as is our custom, which will be the second Tuesday of December. Uh, and, uh, we thank you for being here today, your motion up here.
I'm due, Jack.
Any objections, so, thank you.